We ready for the second one? Yeah, okay, we'll call the meeting back to order. Thank you for that demonstration. Really impressive.
Thank you. Yeah, we really enjoy showcasing our talent, so appreciate that. My next presentation tonight, it's my honor to recognize a student at Jameson High School here in Lemoore who is this year's recipient of the Red Ribbon Design. And I believe that you have some shirts coming to you tonight, and if they weren't in double extra large, I would've even got one. But they don't make them in double X yet, so we'll make sure you get one. But each year, a student is selected based on an art contest by Jameson High School, and the design is used on the official posters for Red Ribbon Week and the T-shirts that you'll receive tonight. Red Ribbon Week was founded in the 1980s, and it was founded after Kiki Camarena was murdered and tortured by a Mexican drug cartel. A lot of people don't realize where it was founded and where it started. And people in Camarena's hometown of Calexico, California, they wore red ribbons in honor of his death. And it was a campaign against drugs and violence. Political bodies got involved in the campaign. Nancy Reagan was a big proponent of Red Ribbon Week, and it was officially recognized as a national campaign by President Bill Clinton. And each year, we as a department, we honor and recognize Red Ribbon Week by telling everyone in our community that we should be against drugs and violence and anything associated with those two things. The honor of the student being recognized for this award has been going on for quite some time, and tonight, I would like to recognize Justin Caldera, who will come up here. And I told him he had to give a speech, and he got really nervous, and I told him I was just kidding. So Justin, come on up. You don't have to give a speech. In honor and recognition of your artwork, Justin, the Lemoore Police Department would like to present you this plaque in recognition of you being the recipient, and we'd also like to present you this challenge coin from the Lemoore Police Department. Principal Patello, who's doing the filming over there, is here from Jameson High School tonight. I'd like to thank her for everything she does for our community in that school. That was a great choice in that selection. She's doing some great things there. And Mrs. Stone would also like to make a presentation to council if you would allow her a few minutes. Thank you. Justin?
Congratulations.
Oh, of course we can. Whatever you want. Hey, I'll screen boss around. It's boss day, and I told my wife happy birthday.
Well, yeah, here's my new boss, so yes, it is a pleasure. And I just want to thank Lemoore Police Department. Oh, I want to thank Lemoore Police Department and Soladad Perez, which I don't think is here. Anyway, she works endless hours to help make this possible, and we certainly appreciate it. And it's such a pleasure to have Justin here tonight. I'll open one of these shirts, and so the design goes along with our city's connection with the Naval Air Station Lemoore, which is really nice. And so Justin was in the graphic arts screen printing class last year, came back this year as a senior, and so it's such an honor, and we thank you for your support of our school and what we do, because Jameson is an important element of the school district here in Lemoore, and we appreciate that. I know I've had Mr. Neal there a couple times doing things, and we welcome any of you at any time to come on down and see what we do. Isn't that right, Mrs. Patello? Yes, that's right. New boss, she's wonderful. So anyway, Justin's going to take this up to Mayor. We thank you very much. Yes? Oh, well, here. See, that's where it's not done, so I could've gotten in trouble outside. And then on the back row are the sponsors, and I know Soladad works tirelessly, and there may be others behind the scenes that I don't know about that help you along the way, so we appreciate that. And they started going out to the elementary schools today, so.
Thank you.
All right, now, don't give away your plaque.
Can we just give this young man a round of applause?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll be moving on now to department and city manager reports.
We'll start off with Jason Glick, Parks and Rec.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Just updating council on a few events that are coming up. This Friday through Sunday is the BMX Fall National. Pretty big event. They're anticipating between 3,000 and 3,500 people attending during the three days. The event starts, kicks off on Friday. Pre-trials start at 11:30 a.m. Friday and go until about 5:30, and on Saturday and Sunday, the gates open at 9 a.m. Age ranges are from 3 all the way to adult. So this is pretty exciting. It's the first national event that BMX has ever had in Lemoore. Saturday, October 27th, at 12 p.m. is the Lemoore U Scholarship Golf Tournament at the Lemoore Golf Course. Sunday, October 28th, from 2 to 8 p.m. is a Dia de los Muertos event put on by J. Live Entertainment at Kings Lions Park. On Saturday, November 3rd, at 6 p.m. is the Rotary Crab Feet at the CMC. On Saturday, November 10th, at 8 a.m. is the Veterans Day Run. It's a 5K run, 3K walk. The race start area is Lions Park. And on Sunday, November 11th, at 6 p.m. is a Veterans Day Parade on Downtown D Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Frank Rivera, Public Works.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Today and tomorrow, staff is holding a design camp. It's our first meeting regarding the city's water treatment plant project. So today, we looked at site plans for each of the sites with the equipment, you know, scaled in plan view, and then it was actually a 3D model to where we can actually see the sites and manipulate the equipment on site to kind of minimize the, you know, the spaces between the equipment and the overall footprint. So today was all about that. Tomorrow, we're going to focus on project delivery and instrumentation and control, so just wanted to let you know.
Thank you. It's exciting. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Chief Smith?
I was supposed to mention this at the end of my presentation, so the Red Ribbon festivities will be on October 27th at Lions Park from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. Hope to see you all out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I have an update. Good evening, Mayor and council members. So did an overnight run to the ICSC last week down in LA. Smaller event, but got to meet some good vendors. Went down there with Jay Salier from Kings EDC. Historically, Kings EDC has not gotten into the retail area of things, so stepping into new waters, so we partnered and went down there together and checked out the show. Bit of not-so-good news that I'm sure most people heard, but the local Kmart is selling. They're going to start liquidating in about two weeks, according to the news. But on the flip side of that is, that's a pretty good retail space, so we've already made contact with Chris Comm. Chris Comm is working on getting a list of potential people and names for us. Staff brainstormed today with some names to make contacts, as well as Kings EDC sending out the feelers to start advertising the space that it's available. So we'll see what we can do to get people in the Kmart. It is an 87,000 square foot space. They are willing to divide it into 20,000 square foot sections, so you could get one to four stores in there, potentially. So, thank you.
I'd like to say thank you for moving so quickly, because the news was rather quick that you already had made contact to try and fill that void. And I'd like to also point out that in our kind of time of need when we had something closed down, we immediately reached for Chris Comm, which is our largest arm to reach for when we need to immediately fill a gap. So I hope that kind of settles some questions about the validity and importance of our contracts with Chris Comm. And again, thank you for acting so quickly to resolve that. Thank you.
So what kind of retailers did you talk or see at ICSC?
This event was a little different. There was a lot of developers that were showing kind of the developments they've done, but Velarta was down there, Burlington's, you know, they're not just a coat factory anymore, folks. So not a lot of restaurants this time. I mean, probably the biggest chain restaurant we ran into was Golden Corral. We did talk to them. Some follow-up, we engaged Denny's, well, Chris Comm engaged Denny's years ago at ICSC, and Chuck introduced me to them at the last year's big event. They were not there, but they have come back to Lemoore. About every six months, they come to see what's going on. They were real interested when the West Side Development started moving dirt. So I talked to Laura Grace again this past week, and in telling her about the upcoming 80-acre development, she asked me for the literature on that development coming up, so she can take that to her franchisee in this area. So a couple little feelers. I think one thing was eye-opening for me last time and as well for Jay from the EDC this time, is the competition out there for space and the retail and the requirements. So it's definitely a challenge, but we're up for it, and the more partners and more eyeballs we have looking at it, the more successful we'll be.
It's good to see EDC and Chris Comm working together. I think that's really good for us. Thank you. All right, that's it.
That's it.
We'll go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. We have five items on consent calendar. Is there any items that council wishes to pull for further discussion? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar as written?
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar as written.
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion by Mr. or Ms. Blair, and a second by Mr. Brown to approve the consent calendar as written. That includes 3-1, which is approval of the minutes, regular meeting, October 2nd, 2018. 3-2 is approval investment report for the month ended August 31st, 2018. 3-3 is approval notice of completion, CIP 5209 Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition Upgrade. 3-4 is approval contract awards, CIP 5712 Geotechnical Engineering Services for Police Dispatch Center, and 3-5 is approval purchase of bioenergizer from Probiotic Solutions. Ms. Blair, how do you vote on that?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Consent calendar is passed as written. Thank you. This time, we don't have any public hearings, so we will go to new business, which is section five. Item 5-1 is report and recommendation, Chamber of Commerce Holiday Stroll Contract. Ms. Spear?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here this evening to seek your approval, if you agree, for a contract with the Lemoore Chamber of Commerce to have them help facilitate the holiday stroll for the downtown merchants. So Holiday Stroll has been a historical event that's happened in the city of Lemoore for several, several years, where they help kind of facilitate downtown business ownership, get patrons in the walking forum during the holidays. The last couple of years, because the downtown merchants haven't been meeting because they failed to have quorums for a while, it didn't really have an invigorated presence. So this year, the downtown merchants have actually asked if the Lemoore Chamber could help them facilitate that event. And unfortunately, due to a lack of a quorum at the last meeting to vote on the contract, I can't tell you that the downtown merchants have seen the contract and approve it, but what I can tell you is that they did agree with us bringing forward a contract for your review. If I had waited to take this particular agenda item to the DMA before coming to you, there would be no time for the Chamber to facilitate the event, so we made the decision to bring it forward now in hopes that you would see the value. So the contract with the Chamber is approximately $2,000. It's already budgeted for in the downtown merchants' budget, so there's no need to move monies around. And that is for the Chamber to provide the staff necessary to help facilitate planning that event. So you'll see in the staff report that it's going to include gathering feedback from the downtown merchants and having a downtown merchants' forum before they finalize the plans. There is an additional up to $1,000 expenses, and that's for things like DJs, you know, any sort of outside vendor they need to pay to come in. So it would be a max cost of 3,000, but the Chamber's contract is specifically for $2,000. Do you have any questions?
So if it went to, you said that there'd be no need for money to be moved around at 2,000? If it was at 3,000, where would the other 1,000?
It's still there. We budgeted for it, knowing that it was the DMA's intent to host this this year.
So the budget's already there for it?
Correct.
I've been talking to a lot of people in the city. They like the holiday stroll, you know? A lot of people, they keep asking me, you know, hey, we're going to have it again, you know? Good stuff.
Do you have questions? Okay, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council. I appreciate the DMA and the Chamber working together, getting people downtown. That's exactly what we need. Haven't had that kind of cooperation and participation for a while, so I like the idea of what's going on here. It's going to be good for us, so thank you very much. So I have a motion for this. Make a motion to approve as written?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Brown and a second by Mr. Neal to approve this item as written. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion is passed. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So we will go to item 5-2, Report and Recommendation, State of California Participating, Addendum Number 7149922 Local Agency Subscription Agreement to Authorize the City's Participation in the State of California Purchase Card, Cal Card Program this quarter.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. It's a lot of words to say. We want to open up a Cal Card, we want to put in an application with Cal Cards so that we can have Cal Cards. Currently, we're going through a bank with our credit cards, but the Cal Cards, I believe, would be easier to manage and be more, they would be able, I would be able to monitor them more closely.
And that will be then on our reports as well, then?
What's that?
Like, you said you would be able to monitor transactions more closely, and you said those would be present on our reports as well, right?
Yep, we can make them present.
As long as that's true, as long as they can be present in our reports too, so that way we can be transparent.
You mean like on the warrant register?
Yes.
Yep. Yes, definitely.
As long as it's present on the warrant register, it's all good. Is that to me?
Who would be authorized to carry and purchase items with this?
That would be up to the city manager and the city council on who would be able to. Currently, our credit cards don't have a name on them, so we would have, they would have names on them, so we would designate at least the directors and some of the direct reports to the directors.
How many do you anticipate needing?
Between 10 and 15.
Each of the persons that they're associated with would be, like, all of that information would be printed out in the warrant register then, so that it would be just as transparent as possible for everybody could see then, all the transactions, what they were used for. There is, in fact, more transparency in putting this all, it would be almost like.
They're currently still, they're on the, they're currently.
But I mean, it's who's purchasing them, though?
Yes.
That would be present, and that's not currently on the warrant register necessarily?
No, no.
Just wanted to make that out.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Do we have any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for a vote. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve. I really like the idea of having extra transparency with some of the transactions, so I'm on board.
Second.
So there's a motion by Ms. Blair and a second by Mr. Brown. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Neal?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion is passed. Thank you. Go to city council reports and requests. Ms. Blair?
Well, I just wanted to say I got to see the K-9 demonstration over at the MIQ Fall Festival as well, so it's exciting every time. So, good job, guys. And aside from being out there this last weekend, I also wanted to please ask again publicly that we have at some point during our awards presentations some kind of appreciation and presentation for our volunteer firefighters. We still have not done one, and I would really like to see one before the end of the year. And so, again, I'm asking, and perhaps maybe I need consensus from the council, but I would like to see some sort of presentation publicly. Does anybody have a problem with that?
I agree.
I agree.
No problem.
Can we do that before the end of the year?
So I'd like to comment on that. I have spoke to the fire chief on multiple occasions about this, and the feedback I got is the best way we can honor them is to just kind of leave them alone, let them be. They don't want to come here and have, that's not what they're doing their job for. I'm more than, I mean, we love our fire department, and everybody knows that, and we say it all the time, and they're a great asset. So that is why I haven't brought, haven't brought something forth.
I see Chief German here. Would you like to talk on that or speak on that?
I just want to agree with what Nathan just said. We know what you guys think of us. I appreciate us, and that's all we need.
Thank you. Thank you, yes.
I want to say, didn't we have Kate serve up one?
That was for Chief Gibson's retirement.
Thank you.
It was a celebration.
Ms. Blair, thank you, thank you for the thought, but honestly, we just, we're happy with where we're at.
All right, thank you. Anything else, Ms. Blair? Mr. Brown?
I just want to say that I got a meeting this Thursday at 2:30, Kings County Commission on Aging Meeting. So if you have any concerns or whatever, anything you want me to bring to the Commission of Aging, you can go ahead and send me an email, dbrown@lemore.com, or call me on my cell phone if it's on my card.
Slow the process down.
Say again?
Slow the process down.
Slow the process down. I'll work on that. I don't know if it's within our budget. We'll try. That's a good one. The other one is, there's a Sustainable Groundwater Management Act meeting here in the Chamber's Thursday at 5:30 p.m. It's about groundwater or land subsidence in our aquifers and stuff. If you're not doing anything Thursday, come on by. It's really interesting. No, it is, though. It is to me. I geek out on it, so. The other thing is, is I've been getting some members of the public, you know, out there in Lemoore. I had a couple people contact me, and they're telling me about Denny's, you know, talking to me about Denny's and how, you know, their question is, is why doesn't Lemoore want Denny's in Lemoore? And I go back and I tell them, because I want to make sure everybody understands, I go back and tell them, I say, Denny's, we don't own Denny's, we don't own the land, but we want them, I mean, as long as it meets our general plan and our ordinances and our zoning, bring it, bring it on, bring it on. I don't think any other council member on this up here thinks any other way, or any other type, you know, any restaurants and stuff like that. So unless I'm mistaken, you know, I don't know, but I don't think, I don't think, you know, we're trying to discriminate against Denny's. I mean, but the other thing is, is the letter that was read earlier, that was read into the record concerning Councilmember Blair. I just want to say that it's shocking. I'm sad it happened, you know? You know? I apologize for those type of actions, you know? You know? You know, that's all I have to say about that is, I just wish, you know, I just wish that we could, you know, agree to disagree and leave it at that. So, but, you know, there's kids in there, adult, you know, others, I'll just leave it at that. I mean, it's common sense, so that's all I have.
Mr. Neal?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers. Grab my attention, I was going to talk about public comments. When we talk about bringing restaurants in here, I had put a Facebook post up a while back about bringing restaurants in here. It's kind of like I was an athlete. If I didn't do what it took to be an athlete, to take state, I wouldn't have been a state champion. I had to prepare for that. Anything you do, you have to prepare to do it. You don't have, you could say, I want anything in here, but if you're not bringing, if you're not putting forth the effort, I don't care what you say you want in here. It's not showing. You have to show me. For instance, if I say I love you, action speaks louder than words. Anything you bring in here, you got to grab the right people and you go with it. You don't just say, we want this in here, and we want that in here, without moving. It's a thing we call, we have to be transparent, but we also have to work together and bring things in for the community. We have a police department at 12:00, 1 o'clock, everything's closed downtown. They have to go to 7-Eleven to get something to eat. They have to go to Jack in the Box, drive-through. I've seen it for myself, even Taco Bell, to get something to eat. I would love for them to have a Denny's here. I'm pushing for anything. We need to really say we really love our community. Actions speak louder than words. Now, I'm going to go, and I'm not going to stand there for a minute, I'm going to go into the public comments. Mrs. Valanciun talked about Mr. Voorhees, and I was not on that. I was against that, the whole from day one, selling the property. I think we need to go into that more, because you don't just buy a property and you let it sit, and then you go, you only bought it for so much, and then you're going to sell it for a bigger value. You made a profit on our city, when we thought you was going to bring something in here that was going to help our community out. You said you was going to do it, you didn't do it. What do we do? We just look over and say, well, he got the property, although he didn't meet the criteria, but he gets to stay right there with the property. And then when he wants to sell the property, he can sell it for whatever he wants to sell it for. That was Christmas. Ho, ho, ho. Santa Claus was there for him. Let's talk about Chris Comm. I just don't understand why, who has the audacity to say, let's look at Chris Comm, when Chris Comm has run, helped our police department out? I mean, so much. I'm talking, we put millions, they put over a million in, if you add everything up. They've done a lot in this community. So when we talk about Chris Comm, let's talk about them, let's see, what have Chris Comm really done? They've run ARCO in here, they've done a lot of things for the short time they've been here. Now they're doing lobbyist work, and they've been doing a great job with the lobbyist work. And so I just wanted to say, to bring in Chris Comm, I could bring in other places that we've run into, we gave them a second chance, but I think Chris Comm has really sacrificed, and they've been doing a great job. That's just my own personal experience, what I see in Chris Comm. Almost done. Mayor, you just cut me off in a minute. Okay. Let's talk about the water treatment program. What's going on with our sewer wastewater? Can you expound on that? Because you brought a machine, we talked about that machine came out of state.
Yeah, the second stage of equipment is showing up this month to start a second wave of testing, and we're hoping to have some good results reported back by New Year's.
Okay, last question. This is it, Mayor, and I'm done. I went up and took a trip two years ago, I think a year and a half ago, two years maybe. Time flies so fast, I'm getting old. To Kalanga. Once I seen Kmart go down there, I knew it was a matter of time. I did a video. I knew it was coming, but did we, and I told the city manager, I told everybody, I said, it's coming. Did we prepare ourselves, knowing that it was going to hit, instead of saying, okay, it hit now, now we're going to hurry up and jump on it? Should we have been prepared a while before this happened? It's kind of like, if I lived in Oklahoma, I know tornado season in June. I want to make sure I have a cellar. I want to make sure I have a basement. Are we doing them things? We have to be true to ourselves. Are we really, are we preparing when things close down like this? I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I've got a couple items that I'd like to talk about. First of all, I had a really good time out at Kids Day, the Lemoore U Soccer League out there at our Lemoore Sports Complex. Had a lot of good comments on how the changeover to the city running that place now and how well it looks. A lot of people complimented Jason Glick and his staff for what they're doing out there. Had about 300 or 400 kids out there, a lot of parents. Had about three or four hundred kids out there, a lot of parents, good stuff, so I appreciate what you guys are doing, I think that's gonna be a good thing for us. It really is. Next thing, so, yeah, I've been meeting a lot of people lately and, uh, I get the same thing, I'm hearing that same thing. For some reason, there's this impression out there that we don't want Denny's or restaurants like that. Not the truth. It's absolutely not the truth, we are doing everything we can. Nathan's been talking to them every six months, I mean, they're, they've told him, as soon as we start moving out there on the West Side, they're ready to come, we got all kinds of traffic going down that forty-one, I would welcome that. I don't think anybody on this council has ever indicated any differently, so I'd like to put that on the record. People that are listening to us from Facebook, please pay attention, that's absolutely not true. And anybody who is saying that is being disingenuous and they're hurting our city by saying that, because that's scaring people off. This council does not discriminate, we want things like that, so I hope we can put that one to bed. And you, Mr., um, Mr. Olson, I know you're trying everything you can to get out there and talk to those people, so I appreciate that. Um, and going in the line of what Mr. Neal was talking about with this Kmart and, um, things like that, one of the things I wanna propose, I've been thinking about this. Downtown, we were talking about Downtown Merchants Association and the holiday stroll and all that kinda stuff. I would really like to see if we could not put together some kind of committee. Ad-hoc committee, I don't know exactly what we would call it, we may have to have a study session for it, but we have a lot of good brain power right here in this city. People that have done a lot in their own right, successful business owners, been out, outside of this town for a while, gone out and seen different things, other perspectives. I, I'm, I wrote down some names that came to mind. Olivera, Lahodney, Ward, Levinson, Clement, the list goes on, Ms. Holman, your mother, very successful business owner. I think we should tap into that, they, they love this community, they've been successful and I think we should use them. I don't see why we can't get some ideas about how to fill up that Kmart, what we can do downtown. Talk to the, talk to the property owners about maybe doing something creative with our, the lease agreements and that sort of thing. I would really like to see if the council would have.
Kind of like an economic development committee.
Yes.
Type of thing, it doesn't have to be official, but, type of thing, ad-hoc committee, I don't know.
However we can do it and the sooner the better, because I think there's just a lot of talent out there that, I know I was reading earlier about Mr. Olivera, he's teaching out there at West Hills College a really neat class about business. He's been on the Cal Purge Board for a long time. We can't, we can't afford not to use that kinda stuff and I, I think he would be, him and all the other people that I've mentioned and even people that I haven't mentioned that you might know of, would be a real benefit to our community. So, can I get a consensus for at least a study session or something?
Absolutely.
What would we need? What would he need to do that? How, how, you know, to structure that?
Counsel, and, and certainly consensus for a study session is fine. Um, if you want a council-designated committee, ad-hoc standing, whatever it may be, then obviously council would need to take a vote on that, pass a resolution of some kind, that type of thing. If it's, um, ad-hoc is, just so you know, ad-hoc is a temporary committee, so it's not a longstanding committee, it doesn't go on forever, um, so it just depends what council's looking for. Um, city manager and staff have the right to hold or create committees that aren't directed by council, we've talked about that before. Um, so it just depends what council's looking for, so I, I would suggest a study session for further discussion.
Come back with the options, yeah, great.
Okay, thank you. And, um, that's it, I don't have anything else. Meeting will be adjourned.
You're talking in campaign mode now. You're in campaign.